Evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us for our Town Board Work Session. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't have any announcements tonight, except for at the end, just a couple of comments at the end. So tonight, our first item for discussion is we have a visitor, Lynn Durway, from New York Class. Thanks for joining us. New York Class stands for New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System. Basically, it's a short-term investment service for municipalities and fire districts. And the comptroller and I saw a whole class on it at a meeting for the Mayors and Supervisors Association, and I thought it was fantastic, and it's a way for the town to have additional revenue without much, you know, risk. So this is Lynn, and Lynn, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
And you could go ahead and start if you please.
Sure. Thank you for making time for me tonight on your agenda. I just want to give you a little bit of my background. I'm a retired school administrator. I worked in public education for almost 40 years, and during that time, I was a participant with New York Class for 20 years, and I was on their governing board for 15 years, most recently as chairperson. So I really have a passion for the program, and I was given the opportunity to come onboard with the New York sales team the day after I retired. As Supervisor Nick mentioned, New York Class is a cooperative liquid investment program strictly for New York State schools, municipalities, fire districts, et cetera. It was established 30 years ago in accordance with general municipal law and the state comptroller's approval. We can only do cooperatively what each entity can do on its own. It's rated by Standard and Poor's. The rating is AAAM, which is the highest rating available for government investment pools, and they also review the fund each and every week to ensure compliance. It's fully collateralized in accordance with general municipal law, and right now, we have three main investments. Our portfolio is about 75% treasury bills, 16% repurchase agreements, and they're collateralized at 102%, and about 9% certificates of deposits, and they're guaranteed by the Federal Home Loan Bank Letter of Credit. One of the nice things about the fund is we don't have any minimum balance requirements. We also don't have any transaction fees. We don't have any limits on the number of transactions you can make in a month. And you can have multiple sub-accounts, and the beauty of that is that the interest earned on each sub-account is credited to that sub-account, so you don't have to do any proration at the end of the month for your interest earned. We currently have over 475 participants across the state, and our balances are 2.9 billion, which is an all-time high for us. And our current daily yield is 2.3%.
Daily yield?
Daily yield. So you know that that would be a little bit higher as far as a monthly yield goes. Your transaction cutoff every day is at noon, so if you leave your funds in until noon, you get credit for them that day. And the way it works is we have a secure online portal where each municipality's information is in pull-down menus, so you can do wires or ACHs to move money back and forth between New York Class and your home bank accounts. The fund is administered by Public Trust Advisors. That's who I work for, and they also have a client service desk that's open every day between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. So I wanted to also let you know, some of the local participants, last year, East Fishkill Fire District came onboard. We also have the Village of Fishkill, the Town of Poughkeepsie, Town of Milan, Town of Pleasant Valley, the Town and Village of Rhinebeck. And I want to mention that Karen McLaughlin is a member of our governing board, and she's at the Village of Rhinebeck. We have a governing board made up of 15 participants from around the state, so she would be the closest one to your area. Pretty much, that is it in a nutshell. I tell people it's most similar to a savings account. So a lot of people will use it pretty aggressively, leave money in as long as possible to get the higher interest rates, and then make a withdrawal, usually the day before they need So at this point, I'll open it up to questions.
Board has any questions? So basically, we can move the money in and out daily?
Correct.
And so do you notice that a lot of municipalities park their dollars that they collect for their school taxes into that and then take it out once they have to distribute it to the school districts?
Absolutely.
Right.
Also, they'll have multiple funds, like a general fund, a highway fund, a fund for any reserves you might have.
Right, so if we have recreational funds, we have that separate, and then the interest only goes into that account?
That's correct.
Right.
We have a county that has 52 sub-accounts.
Wow.
Now, that is pretty excessive, I think, but as I said, there's unlimited sub-accounts allowed.
And so how does New York Class make their profit?
Well, the 2.3% is actually a net yield. There's a gross yield, which is .12 to .15% higher, and that's the difference. That's the administrative fee. So that fee covers everyone at Public Trust Advisors. It covers our legal services, our audit, our client services desk, our website, all of those expenses.
Got you. Pretty basic.
Can you explain more the collateralization of the deposits?
Yes, I can. The U.S. Treasuries, as I mentioned, they're the largest segment of the fund, and they don't require collateralization because they're backed by the full faith and credit of the U.S. government. The repurchase agreements are collateralized, and they're at 102%, and they're backed by U.S. Treasuries. The bank deposits are what is covered by the Federal Home Loan Bank Letter of Credit. And if you were to go to the state comptroller's website and look under Resources and Guidebooks, there's a guidebook on investing public funds, and they specify all the collateralization requirements, and you'll see that we meet those requirements. I can leave this sheet with you if you like. This comes out monthly.
I think just to clarify that point is that whenever you deposit municipal monies, the bank or the depository has to have other collateralization to ensure that your funds are safe, and so that's the other collateralization that's here, and that's how they comply with the general municipal law by having that. So just any bank that the town wants to do business with, they must have a third party holding collateralization up to the amounts of the deposit.
So how much should we take in in school taxes, ballpark?
A year.
150 million?
So if I put that 150 million in there for a month, while everybody's paying it, and then I can withdraw it all the day before, send it to the school, and the town would keep the interest on that?
That's correct. I thought you were going to ask me to compute the interest, which I don't do anything in my head anymore.
You can ask the comptroller.
But I will.
How much is that, Mark?
It'd be, you know, $100,000.
Day?
No. For the tax collection.
So I'm...
That 100,000 would stay in the general fund at that point, correct? We'd just keep that interest? The town?
Yeah, I assume yes.
Just don't tell the police department that we got an extra...
The money is paid to the Town of East Fishkill.
We currently, yes, we keep the interest.
We keep the interest.
Yeah, we collect the school tax.
And that would be more than we're getting from the banks.
That would be more than we're getting now.
We have an online calculator on our website, so if you were to go to the website, you can put in specific amounts of money for specific time periods, and it'll tell you what you would have earned with New York Class, and you can compare that to what you actually earned in your bank account. Are you checking your mail?
Well, any dollars extra that we collect now is a home run to me, and the, just, you know, the breakdown with the collateralization is wonderful.
So besides internal check and balance, you're also regulated like a regular bank, correct, and audited like so?
We're audited every year, and we also are half, we're governed by the Securities and Exchange Commission. We have a lead agent, and it's the Village of Potsdam way up north, and every day, they audit what comes in and what goes out, and they have to sign off on that.
Have you had, in the past, since you know, had any discrepancies that you would disclose with us?
Never.
Do you know how many months in your history here have you incurred a gross loss?
Never.
Never?
We've never broken the buck, so to speak.
And how long have you been doing this?
30 years.
30 years?
Yes. It's been in existence 30 years. So even when the economy tanked, the interest rates are what's affected by it, not the principal. So the interest rate for a time was pretty close to zero.
As it was with any bank.
Yeah.
So about two years ago, we were earning .15 to .17% interest. This year, we're earning .3% on our deposits. So just as a comparison, at 2.3 to 2.4%, potentially taking in eight times the amount of interest.
So the economy does play a factor on the returns on the money that we keep in your bank?
It does. We pretty much, you'll see us follow the federal funds rate, because any time the Fed raises rates, we follow, especially since we have such a large portion of the portfolio in treasury bills. And I know the interest really makes a lot. The difference in interest between a bank and what we're doing means a lot. I have a small town next to me who told me that they believe they're going to be able to buy two highway trucks with their additional interest that they earn in one year.
That would be...
So they were pretty excited about it.
Sure. Well, as you know, it's harder and harder for municipalities to be creative making revenue, and it's, our mandates are higher and higher every year, so...
And there's no requirement to maintain any balances, so that if rates were to drop and bank interest were to rise, we would just, with all due respect, move money from Class to the higher rate?
Absolutely, which we saw happen, you know, 2009, 2010.
When the rates dropped, right.
Yeah, not that they were earning any more in the bank, it's just that why would they bother even transferring money out, you know?
Right. It's more convenient to have it in the bank if there's no difference between the two.
Sure.
Mark, that hypothetical question that Peter asked before, is this something that really happens, or is this something that Peter was dreaming about? The interest on them...
No, we really do keep the interest.
Okay, so it's about 100,000, give and take?
I mean, depending on the rates and how long we're holding the balances, you know? So we don't have all that money sitting in there for the full period of time.
Okay.
So you could go to our website and put in that amount, and you could put the past 30 days and see what it would have earned during the past 30 days.
Excellent.
Yeah, it sounds fantastic.
Too good to be true.
I know.
Almost.
Now, why hasn't this been brought to the towns and stuff, and the school districts, and the fire districts and everything, more over the years?
Well, years ago, before the economy changed, we did have two full-time people marketing the program in New York State. And at that time, we had several participants, and I think the highest balance they ever had was 1.7 billion. And then when the economy turned, you know, people withdrew their funds and whatnot, and there wasn't anybody marketing the program, because what did you have to offer? So now that rates are coming back, there's four of us that work part-time on the program in New York State. We're getting out to conferences, we're meeting people there, we're offering to, you know, come to their board meetings, talk to boards, do whatever we can. Tomorrow, I'm speaking to a group of school business officials up in Albany. So we're just now starting to get the word out again. We're putting advertisements in. For instance, I don't know if you're a member of GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, you'll find we have an ad in their magazine. So I think the word is starting to get out again.
And how I found them was at Association of Towns. They had a booth down there, and I spoke to another supervisor from Town of Pleasant Valley, Mark Vigliosi, and he told me, he introduced me to Joel, and how they participate in this program, and I started asking questions, and then he said that they were going to be at Dutchess County Mayors and Supervisors for a meeting, so that's when I asked that comptroller to come with me.
Good.
It would be great for you to give the presentation to the board, and thank you. Any other questions? Lynn?
Is this an office right here in Hopewell?
Yes, they have an office in our town also.
So Mark can just go across.
So what would be our next step to, if we, the board, to...
You have to adopt the resolution to enter into the agreement.
Agreement?
I can send you the resolution in Word format if you'd like it, you know, just let me know.
That'd be great, thank you.
And then we can go from there.
Perfect.
And registering after that is a very quick and easy process as well.
Okay.
And your contracts with your bank will be year-to-year, or...
We don't have contracts.
You don't have no contracts?
It's a co-op, so we become a member, and we can use it or not use it as we decide.
Yeah.
I think we'll put it on our next Town Board meeting, which is April 25th.
Great.
And offer to the board for vote, and we'll go from there.
Very good.
I'll put more chocolates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming out.
It was nice meeting everyone.
You as well. See, Peter, she brought chocolate. You want mine? No, I'm kidding, only kidding. So I think that's pretty much a home run, you know?
Yeah, it does seem a little too good to be true.
Especially when we need the money, we take it out and use it for what we need, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the turnaround time is 24 hours, so you just have to prepare one day in advance.
So basically, funds like the general fund, where we have our fund balance, we could park most of that in there?
Yeah, we would park most of our operating monies there and then move it as we need it, so as we have payroll and check runs, we would maybe a day or so in advance move it into the bank.
And other accounts like the rec fund, we can keep in there?
That's just sitting there doing nothing, right?
Right, so that could definitely...
That would be tremendous.
Yeah.
Can you move the money around without us voting each time?
Yes, I think the agreement stipulates that, correct?
Well, it's the authority of the supervisors to invest in the approved depository, so once you approve it as a depository, it's in the supervisor's discretion to move it.
And he could pull it whenever he feels necessary.
Correct.
So, well, that will be the comptroller.
Yeah, we don't have to wait two weeks for a vote.
Right, okay, great, so I'll put it on the next agenda for the next meeting. That's good. Okay, next, would the highway superintendent like to sit up here?
Sure, why not?
Yeah. I'm going to grab your little...
Your name sign, so we know who you are.
Yeah, the other way. So we, Ken Williams, our highway superintendent, we just wanted to have a little general discussion. Our town engineer, Scott Bryan, has prepared a little program for us to take a look and give us some information on how roads are, the quality of roads, and the scale of roads, one being the best, five being the worst, and how it takes to rehabilitate roads, since we are on the brink of paving, and the superintendent will give a little description of some of the roads we're looking at this year, and after the engineer could give us his report here.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. So I'm just going to give a little overview on a study that was done, roads throughout Dutchess County, including our town, East Fishkill, conducted by the Cornell Local Roads Program, which you all have a copy of. And before I get into it, just basically to give you an overview, during the year, I believe it was '16 and '17, they did an intern program ship where they had some summer interns go out, do a study of all the roads in Dutchess County, town roads, county roads, city and village roads, using a format prepared by the Cornell Local Cooperative, and some computer software that they had generated and created to try to do a scoring system to rate, you know, different roads within the county. What this report does, basically in the beginning, kind of describes the different conditions you may find your roads in, from, you know, on a scale, I believe it is one to eight, we'll go through it, where one is in very good condition, let's say eight is the poorest condition. It'll describe at each stage, you know, the repairs that are necessary, the difference in cost that's necessary, and talk about, you know, the benefits of trying to maintain roads before they deteriorate to a point where you have to do a total rehab. At the end, you'll see the summary of all the roads, how we compare. I'll just jump kind of to the end for a moment. Out of the 30 roads that have been studied throughout Dutchess County, that's county, town, and village, and city, out of those 30 roads, we ranked 26 out of 30, with one being the best and 30 being the worst. So we're ranked 26. We're pretty low on that list. So with that, I guess we'll just kind of run through this a little bit. There was a lot to it, we won't hit every detail, but I'll just try to touch on the highlights, and if you have any questions, you know, we can circle back. And I don't know if I really need to get into what the local road program is, but it's basically assistance to local municipalities, highway departments, because, you know, everyone's facing the same problems with, you know, how to best, you know, maintain their roads. And rather than everybody trying to reinvent the wheel, they try to offer some, you know, general guidelines to help basically assess the condition of the roads on an even scale, you know, based on traffic count, based on the condition of the road, age of road. They came up with this computer program that allows you to assess each of these roads and come up with like a scoring system, you know, which roads would be the worst and the ones to try to fix, you know, first. We haven't got the actual breakdown yet from the county, but I'm sure we'll be able to get it. They basically studied about 200 miles of our roads, 196 miles of our roads. So hopefully, we'll be able to take all the information that they generated and not have to, you know, redo all of that. We may want to just take a few of the roads, make our own assessment, and then apply that, you know, globally to the rest of the road. So we should be able to be able to use that as a good resource. So anyway, this is basically the overview of their entire study. I want to really try to get down to road condition, okay? So if we go here, this, under the condition data, it's basically, I believe it's eight different types of failures that a road can experience in no particular order. Alligator cracking is very serious, that's where you have all these little pot-marked cracks, and there's pictures as we go on. Longitudinal cracking, that's usually down the center line or along longitudinally of a road. There's edge cracking. There's potholes, patching, which we do a lot of. Not necessarily so critical, but a nuisance is roughness, you know, and like an uneven road, a rough road. Rutting, we don't experience too much on the town roads, that's usually where you're getting a lot of heavy, heavy traffic at intersections, that you get rutting. Bleeding, we really don't experience that too much. That's if you have like a higher asphalt content, we don't really have that as a problem. But drainage, we do have drainage problems. So here's just some slides of, you know, for instance, your longitudinal cracking, we've seen that. You know, this is something that the state, you'll see in a county, goes out with a crack filler in the fall and try to fill these cracks, and the whole idea is to keep the water from getting into the cracks into the subgrade.
So does it get underneath?
And then that further deteriorates the road.
All right.
Alligator cracking, as you can see here, comes from, you know, an alligator back. That's when you really have a poor subgrade condition, that the subgrade itself is failing, and then the road, you know, can only withstand that so long, and it starts to fail. Once you've reached this point, you know, that's a real serious condition, which now you're looking at recycling or total reconstruction, so this is the worst condition. Patching, we all know about patching and potholes, you know, the idea is to try to keep your roads passable for the traffic, so we're not getting, you know, flat tires or bent rims or accidents or people swerving on toncoming traffic to avoid them. So, you know, potholes are just a common occurrence. Edge cracking, I don't think that's our biggest efficiency, but just to illustrate, you know, you can't have, you know, cracking on the edges of the road. Again, drainage, if you don't have proper drainage and you have water sitting in a road, it poses a hazard to the traveling public, you know, driving through the puddles and possibly hydroplaning or swerving to avoid the puddle. Plus, the water soaks in along the edge of the road, again, softens the subgrade. You've seen that edge cracking, they kind of go hand in hand, so that's not a good condition to have water sitting on the edge of the road or within the road limit. Pavement roughness, that's like spalling of asphalt. Maybe the asphalt was put down too thin, maybe you didn't have tack coat, it was put down in the rain, a lot of things that is just spalling and it's uneven, but structurally, the road itself is still in good condition. Rutting usually is where you have like Route 9 type of rutting, heavy traffic, a lot of tractor-trail loads in the same repetitive pattern, usually at intersections. We don't really, don't deal with that too often. Same thing with bleeding, that's a high asphalt content, we don't deal with that too often. Ravelling, again, if the asphalt was put down too thin, didn't have tack coat, starts to unravel, we've seen that. It's more of a nuisance, it doesn't mean that the road is failing. It's an easier repair, but that's another condition that they surveyed.
No, I'm sorry, I need explanation.
Yes.
Tack coat, what is tack coat?
Tack coat is like basically, for layman's terms, a bonding agent.
Okay.
It's like a water-based emulsion that you spray on the existing surface after it's swept. You got to let it sit for about 20 minutes to get tacky, it's like what it is, tack coat.
Oh, okay.
And then you apply your asphalt, it helps bond it. So it's a bonding agent.
We purchased that last year, we purchased a tack wagon.
Oh, I remember the tack wagon, yes, okay, very good.
Don't step on it, it'll never come off your shoes.
Don't want to get it on your shoes.
Don't want to get it on your shoes or on your clothes.
Yeah, I learned that one.
So their scoring system, basically what they did is they looked at basically two categories, how bad the problem was in the road. Was it just longitudinal cracking? Was it the alligator cracking? Was it just, you know, roughness? And then the second category was, okay, for that section of road, how frequent was it? Is it 10% of the road, 20% of the road, 50% of the road? And these were some of the qualifiers in order to assess a score to a particular road or section of road. The software, we won't get into, you know, tonight, that's something we'll be looking into to see whether that's something we might be able to utilize, so I won't get too much into that. But they used the program to take all this data on, I think, 2,000 miles of roads they assessed, and as you'll see when we get to the end, they have all these scores. So they use that software to compile all that information. And I think one thing that will come of this is that, you know, as we get deeper into the report that the county did, and as we try to project, you know, roads in the future that should be done, and what kind of order that may be, not necessarily for this year, because this year is upon us already, but, you know, looking ahead, this is how we can, I think, explain to everybody how we arrived at this road, and this road, and this road, based on a fair scoring system. I think, you know, we're not going to get to it in time for this year, but it can be a goal for next year and years to come. So now it discusses the different types of maintenance. Six road surface repair categories are preventive maintenance, deferred action, routine maintenance, corrective maintenance, rehabilitation, and reconstruction. And just to spend a few minutes on this, preventive maintenance is action designed to stop deterioration before it becomes a larger problem that needs a different fix. Ceiling cracks is an example. So like that longitudinal crack, if you can, and it's what the county does in a state, just fill that crack, helps preserve the road before it gets too bad.
Now, do we do that?
I have a company that's going to come out and take a look at some of our recently paved roads over the last few years to give us a price, like Lake Walton, if we have some longitudinal cracks starting, we'll take care of it now, so it doesn't become a bigger problem.
Right, so that elongates the condition of the road, so the newer roads stay good longer.
Exactly.
Right.
Routine maintenance is for roads in good condition. This is usually a cost-effective option, which includes local patching or removing the bumps. Routine maintenance may... Routine maintenance may prevent larger problems from occurring. So this is kind of like the next step, you have a decent road, but a couple of potholes popped up, you know, for whatever reason.
Right.
So just taking care of them, maintaining them, so that the road, you know, from one end to the other is in good condition. Corrective maintenance is maintenance which corrects an existing defect, it is more limited and not as cost-effective as other maintenance. Examples include boxing out and patching or installing subsurface drainage. Corrective maintenance differs from rehabilitation, and that corrective maintenance is less expensive. I think we kind of did a little bit of that on Lake Walton, where we boxed out bad areas, we milled out, we, we replaced it with binder. You know, before, a year or so later, we did the overlay. So I, I think that we did like a correction before we actually just, you know, paved on top of it, so maybe Lake Walton's might, might be an example of that.
That's a good.
Deferred action is for sections of road beyond the point of effective preventive maintenance, but not deteriorated where they need rehabilitation. We have a lot of roads in, in that category.
Scott.
Yes.
Surface drainage.
Drainage.
Yeah, do, can you say a couple of words about that, and
About the drainage?
Is there a certain area in our town right now that is affected by that issue more than others? Would it be
Well, drainage is a pretty
Alien parts?
Drainage is, is a pretty big category, you can have, you know, low spots in a road where the water doesn't drain off properly. And it just gets trapped, it's possible to regrade your shoulder, possibly, and get the, and get the water off. You know, that might be some kind of preventive maintenance.
We've been trying to get some of our open ditch lines actually piped in. Because the open ditch lines do, the water just tends to lay in there sometimes, if it's not, if the graders, grader's not out there.
Couple of roads that come to mind is if you, I mean, I'm sure a lot of us have gone around, a lot of Switzerland. I mean, you got some steep roads coming out, I could imagine when the water comes off those roads over there.
Ridge road.
Yeah.
That's more like an erosion issue, I'm going to say than, than
How is, how is our drainage on those roads over there?
Those, those roads, the drainage is usually pretty good over there, most of those pipes have been replaced. But it's like what our, our town engineer was saying, it's a lot of that is erosion control problems, cutting shoulders, keeping the, keeping the catch basins open. And, you know, fall's a big, big problem with the leaves covering up our basins, so we have to get out there, make sure everything's open. So if the water has a place to go, where it's supposed to go, not right off the road, or if a curb gets taken out, you know, by a, by a plow, which it does happen, we try to get out there and fix the curbs. You know, especially on our mountain roads.
So with a, I mean, I know there's a lot of those roads over there, they're fully paved. So put in some riff draft right before the drainage, does it help? The problem of erosion?
Yes, a lot of those roads all have the rip
They do have it?
But again, fall, the leaves coming down, we have to try to keep those, keep that stuff open. So that it serves the purpose, rather than clogs up and then the water just will go where, where it finds its easiest path.
So those catch basin, they get vacuumed probably once a year?
We've been trying to, you know, get guys out there on those steeper hills and with backpack blowers.
Right.
You know, keep, keep those ditch lines open, keep the rip rap drains open.
So they get done once a year as of right now?
Yes, usually in the fall, but again, we have a lot to cover, it's a lot to cover.
I think the, the regulation is you have to do them all within five years.
Yes.
Cause I don't think we can physically do
We can't do it all
All in our town.
I know that we've been taking care of Hillside Lake.
We do that once a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So another type of drainage problem is where if, if your road is like on a hillside, and, and a water wants to come down, and there's really no place to put like an open ditch and say even though the road may be on a grade, if the water runs, you're still getting like seepage underneath that road. And now normally, proper construction in that situation, you'd be putting underdrains in. Which is a trench filled with stone and an underdrain pipe that catches the water just outside the limit of the road, routes it to a catch basin or some outfall before it is able to seep, seep underneath. Now, you can tell that when you see all that alligatoring and, and almost rutting, and a lot of potholes on the edge of that pavement. Cause it's just that water from underneath constantly seeping and not being, you know, routed to the catch basin, now there, there's some areas that if you don't address that, no matter what you do, it's going to come back, so.
All right, one, one road that comes to mind, okay, is West End or East End in Elsal Lake.
Okay.
You could actually see, I mean, if it rains, you see the water, and then you see the yard right past that road that is washed away. So that means that over there
You're talking about?
East End, I believe.
I think it's the third house on the left?
It's all the way at the end of the road, there is water coming down over there from the, the other development, and it washes that road.
We have done quite a bit of drainage work on that, in that area, that's another area that we have to keep an eye on and make sure everything's kept open. That drainage work was done probably five, five or six years ago.
I don't think I, I've seen a pipe underneath that road over there though, I think the water comes right over the road. And in the ladies' backyard over there, front yard, it's all washed away.
I have to take a look.
Yeah, just, just
I'd have to take a look.
Okay.
But I have somebody who understands, and I have to go see.
So I think we picked up on five, rehabilitation. Rehabilitation differs from reconstruction and whether base replacement or recycling is done, and usually includes overlays or extensive recycling. Now, this we had done a few years ago, we're at Four Corners. On Four Corners Boulevard, there was a section of road in really poor condition. And prior to the town accepting dedication from Toll Brothers, we had them rehabilitated, which they brought a big like a rototiller almost device that, that chewed up all the blacktop, and the subbase mixed it all together. You regrade it, roll it, and then, and then you put asphalt on top of that. So you, so you basically reclaim what's there to have a better base, and, you know, that road came out great, it was an inconvenience, you know, when you go to that extent. You know, it's an inconvenience, cause you have catch basins sticking up, and sewer manholes and everything. You know, it, it's, it's an inconvenience to the traveling public, but at the end of the day, basically, you have a new road. Reconstruction is just a complete removal, which we don't want to get into that, that's just excavating and, and removing the asphalt and, and starting from scratch, you, you don't want to get into that. So anyway, prioritizing repairs is necessary to create an effective road repair schedule. Routine maintenance is more cost-effective than letting roads deteriorate to a point where reconstruction or rehabilitation is necessary. However, routine maintenance requires an accurate evaluation of the roads and a long-term plan for the road maintenance. As shown in Figure One and Two below, routine and preventive maintenance does, in the early life of a road, are much less expensive in the long run. However, if the road is allowed to deteriorate to a very poor pavement condition, the cost is amplified. So what these graphs show, I'll give you a minute just to take a look. On the left side, my left, your left, I think, it rates it from the top very good condition to very poor condition. So when you finish that road, obviously day one, it's in very good condition, as time goes on, it deteriorates. So they, so if, let's say your average life is twenty years. At seventy-five percent of that time period, they're saying that your performance drops by forty percent. And that for each dollar that you spend at that point, if you allow it to go to ninety-two percent, seventeen, seventeen more percent, that one dollar will cost you four to five dollars. So it shows you how, as you reach like a breaking point, that as you continue, your, your costs go up exponentially. And, and the chart just below, it speaks about early on in the process, you can just do routine maintenance, might be filling cracks. Preventive maintenance is the next step, you get a few potholes, you take care of those, you don't let them get worse. And then as time goes on, you get into more corrective, like Lake Walton, what we did, and then rehab of like, you know, chewing up the road and relaying it to finally total reconstruction. So basically, the county used this, it's called a PCI Pavement Condition Index to, to rank all the roads in Dutchess County. And they, I think they have a couple of tables here. Now, I don't know that I quite agree with these, they're saying basically, a majority of roads are, you know, sixty, basically, if you can read that, say a score of sixty-five or better on the county level, with, with really most of them being in the eighty to ninety-five range. And then they compare that to the, the town. Towns really start out in like the fifty percent range, or a score of fifty ranging on up to ninety-five. So I don't know what I really get out of these tables, it's, you know, it's just another way of, of, of comparison. I, I think maybe some of these classifications and studies might be able to use, maybe we can increase our CHIPS contribution, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that. Cause I know they mentioned in this study, a correlation between the studies and, and how CHIPS may look at, at a PCI, if we can adopt something maybe a little more formal, we'll, we'll look into that. They'd study again, two thousand miles of road. What I really kind of want to jump down to is, I think this is an obvious statement. In general, the county roads' condition exceeded the condition of local town or village roads, we all know, I think the county roads are in pretty good shape. Roads in areas with steep slopes were often in poor condition, and roads with flat land typically correlating to the population of the immediate area. So in other words, the more traffic you get on a road, that also impacts the condition of the road. And then they talk about just updating the database, you know, on a regular, on a regular basis. What I do want to just kind of jump down to is, based on a scorecard that we'll, something we can utilize, and we'll see if we can pick up where they left off. But they basically have this matrix that you can use based on what's going on with your road to put points to it. And this is what they use to come up with their, their index. Based on cracking, alligator cracking, patching, potholes, rutting, bleeding, et cetera, roughness. And this is a inventory sheet that they used to, again, you know, take notes on different roads, so they can compile the data and make comparisons. So county roads, they're saying in all of Dutchess County, weighted average, which, you know, basically adjusted for different lengths and widths of road. Their score was a town, countywide eighty-two point five. With the road, the county roads in Fishkill being the best roads. East Fishkill was about in the middle of the pack, at a score of eighty-three fourth. So our county roads within the town are about average throughout, as compared to the rest of the county. When you get to the local roads, based on the same, you know, qualifying comparisons, the average of all local roads in the town was a seventy-nine point five. Town of Pleasant Valley had the best roads with an eighty-five point four, East Fishkill was at a seventy-eight, I'm sorry, East Fishkill was at a seventy-five point one. So we were at a seventy-five point one compared to the countywide average of a seventy-nine point five. And on this list, we ranked twenty-six, ours, I'm sorry, I think it was twenty-four out of thirty, that's where we ranked twenty-four out of thirty.
Are you on page twenty-three now, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this just tells you how many miles of roads that they inspected in our town, that's the East Fishkill, one hundred ninety-six point three miles, looks like. Well, original miles of road, and then miles of road inspected, two oh nine. And then it says updated mileage, two fifteen. Where, do you know where we're at currently?
I think we're at two fourteen, or two fifteen right now.
Two fourteen, so, so according to this, they, they looked at every road we have, I, you know, I don't know.
In seventeen, did we take any roads over since seventeen?
I should say two oh
Then it's over two fourteen.
I said, I should say two oh nine of the two fifteen.
This is double, we have double the mileage of roads of any other town in the county.
Yeah, this is a good comparison for all the, you know, we're over ten percent of all the roads in Dutchess County.
Right.
Out of thirty, studied roads, towns, cities, and villages, out of thirty, we have over ten percent.
So it would make sense that we should get more CHIPS money from the state, because we have more miles of road.
Yeah, that's federal, the CHIPS is federal. So anyway, that's just a little quick review, one-on-one in, in pavement repair, pavement condition. And I think we have a lot of work to do ahead of us to try to maybe, hopefully, pick up where they left off, and, and try to take the data that they computed specifically for East Fishkill. And, and you know, put it to good use in trying to come up with a, you know, a long-term, you know, maintenance plan. And, you know, I know we're, we're behind, and I, I, we can't just look at fixing the bad roads, cause then our good roads will fall into, in that condition too. So we're going to have to come up with some kind of
Combination.
Combination of staying on top of the roads that we've fixed already, so we don't lose those and chip away at, at the bad roads.
Yes.
Kenny, how many miles should we be doing a year paving?
Well, I think we came up with we could do, possibly do two this year, it would be
How many should we be doing, if, in a perfect world?
Well, if there's a twenty-year lifespan
In two hundred miles, it's ten miles a year.
Ten miles, and we're doing about two right now?
What we can afford, yeah.
We're stretching to.
Are we doing actual paving, or are we doing two miles of patching?
Well, last year we did, we didn't do full paves, this year we're going to go and do some
We're going to do a combination.
But we're also, like, like our town engineers are saying, we're also looking into preserving what we have. With, I have a company coming in to give us some prices on the crack filling. We're trying to complete our drainage work before we go in and pave the road, so that the drainage is done prior to paving, which is major.
Right, like the councilman said, if we don't fix the drainage, then, like the engineer said, it's going to be compromised down the road later. No pun intended, down the road, it's
See, but the other problem that we have in this town, and, and the engineer is well aware of this, is that sometimes our local roads, okay, they are bypassed by county roads
Sure.
And state roads.
Absolutely.
So there are certain developments, and Scott, we've been there a few years back, where there is flooding in certain developments. But then there is a, a rotten pipe crossing that road, so, you know
We've been changing a lot of rotten pipes.
Right, but you've been changing it on town roads.
He's saying county roads or state roads.
County doesn't come in, that I'm aware, there is a pipe on Elsal Lake Road that has been rotted for at least five years that I'm aware of.
The engineer's been addressing that with the
Right.
Well, I don't know if we're talking the same one, but I know we have one in the pipeline.
Flanders Road.
No, not that one, they're looking at the one by Hillside Lake, replacing that color, yeah.
Right, so this is what I'm saying, I mean, you know, they have
Our pipes on Flanders are rotted too, so.
So
Galvanized, anything that's galvanized.
Anything galvanized thirty-plus years, it's, we just did a big job on Judith Drive, Bradley Drive.
I don't know, you're, you're doing what, what, you got to take care of the town, but sometimes, we could be doing the good work of paving, but if that water doesn't get out
Right.
Where it's supposed to go, then you're wasting your money.
There's no sense of paving the road till the drainage is correct.
Right, well, what he's saying is that the county doesn't fulfill their drainage, and it affects our road.
Yeah, and there's, there are many places where that is happening, between the state and the county. So, you know, in our comprehensive plan, I think that we also need to sit down with some of the outside agencies and, you know, bring them to the table of discussion and say, look, if we do this, you guys need to do this before we plan on doing our work.
Yeah, well, that's a good plan, that when you do reach the roads that, like you said, this year, you plan to do the drainage now, before we do the pave.
We've already started a few of them.
So this would coincide with the county or the state as well. You would contact them to tell them we're going to be paving, say, like you said, close to Flanders. There's rotted pipes on the county road, and that would affect our repave.
You know, that is that bridge on Creamery Road, okay, when there is heavy rains, that water goes right over the road. So I don't know if there is the breeze underneath over there obstructing the water coming out. I mean, I spoke to our two highway superintendents ago, and addressed that, I mean, there are actual trees fallen over there. So I don't know if the water flow is actually what it's supposed to be.
On Creamery you're talking about?
On Creamery, yeah.
Creamery County?
We have routed those pipes, we have routed them.
So they're clear right now, right?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Creamery's a town road, or a county road?
Creamery's a town road.
Yeah.
It's a big road, so I didn't know if it was a county.
And prior to myself taking over our last highway superintendent, he was trying to do some, some work over there to that dam, and I believe he had to stop. I'm not sure exactly why, but there was some issues in there.
But I don't think it's over top since then, there were some improvements made, and I don't know that it's over top.
You and I had addressed it, and we went in with the jetback, and we backed out those pipes, and we routed them out. So I don't, we have not had the water breach the road since.
There a galvanized pipe underneath over there?
I believe that's a plastic at this point.
Plastic, twenty, how big is it?
I think the highway superintendent, I think Dennis did that probably like, like ten years ago or so. I'm not, I'm not exactly
Is it twenty-four inch, Scott, or is it bigger than that?
Bigger than that.
Yes.
So, um, Ken, you have been discussing with the engineer about possible, the roads this year?
Yes.
And what's the possible wish list?
I've been driving the roads a lot since, you know, since the winter's hopefully over. And our pos, our wish list for full paves, we've been talking about Brown Road, um, our portion of Lime Kiln, Blue Hill Road, East Hook Cross Road. And we'll see how, that, that's, those roads are quite large, so we'll see how far our, our budget will take us.
So the engineer will go out where you measure and see exactly where?
Measured a few of them already, I do believe.
Okay, and then also in collaboration with the major fixes, the major repairs. Partial pavings.
Broadway, Lomala, there's a pretty bad section on Mountaintop Road. The Deerwood Development over in Wickapee, which is orchard, cedar, and then on top of Long Hill Orbit. A lot, a lot of more, a lot of people have been complaining again about Old Sylvan Lake Road, which we've done quite a bit of extensive repair over there. But again, there's other sections on that road that need repair as well. I mean, the list goes on and on.
Well, basically, you know, we have been discussing this a long time in the town board. We are discussing it all the time about a long-term comprehensive plan for the road maintenance and repairs. The highway superintendent and the engineer have been getting together more and more to try to see what else we can do for our long-term planning. We will be coming up with a plan to town board soon. And, uh, you know, we have to look at other funding sources also, like the engineer said, more CHIPS. We have to, you know, shake the trees about that. And, you know, the county, you mentioned how the county roads there, um, they're rated higher than ours. They have three hundred and ninety-three miles of road. We have two hundred and fourteen miles of road, according to this study.
We might have more now because we've taken over a few elements.
So we're, you know, not, more than half of Dutchess, more than the amount, miles of road.
Three quarters of our roads are part of Dutchess County's study.
So, you know, they
You're gonna have to pony up a little bit.
The county did also, you know, dip into our pockets with the sales tax. I do say that all the time. But over the time period, it has, you know, eaten away at, at dollars that we could have used towards that. But we are working together for a plan and we will come up with something soon.
You and I talk about this all the time.
Yeah.
All the time.
We do.
I mean, it's, it's time, Nick. We spoke about this a length and
Yeah, we did.
I think some of the county, county, county people, they have to sit with us and really realize that some of the money that they hold, really we could put it to good use.
Yeah, I don't
And it's a long time coming.
I don't think we're gonna get any money out of them.
Well.
Fortunately, I, 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 you know, done, uh, reviewed this over and over and the, the county executive made himself very clear that he says that he cannot give dollars towards paving of, of roads. The county executive is coming to East Fishkill for a town hall meeting, which will be May first, I believe. I will make that announcement at the next town board meeting, but May first at the community center at five-thirty PM. So the residents can come out and, and ask these questions to him.
Absolutely.
It's the number one complaint I get when I'm out and
I think we all do.
My phone rings all the time and I try to get out and at least correct the potholes and at least try to keep it passable so that
You know, I, I mean, I agree with AJ. I was up in Little Switzerland. I, I was seeing, I believe Geneva Drive. I don't know if you took care of that.
I told him about that today too.
He was talking about that today. Those could be water main breaks too that have to be repaired as well. We do get quite a bit of water main breaks up there.
But, you know, these are special areas, you know, they're very steep and again, you know, when it rains and they take a toll. It's not really, uh, we're aware that these problems are all over the place. You know, we're in an unfortunate situation in our town, I mean, with the amount of roads that we have and, you know. We would love to really take care of everything.
I wish we could do it, I wish we could do more than what we can.
Sure, of course we all do.
I think that if Nick won the Lotto, the Mega Million, that's the first thing you said you would do.
I did.
Fix all the roads.
I thought he was gonna withdraw his two point nine billion out of that account.
I did say that the other day to him, if I won the Mega Million.
These are all our, these are all our desires. I mean, I think that right now this is probably what, this, one of the toughest things this town board is really
The toughest, yeah. Unfortunately, it's each and every day that goes by, it's gonna cost us more and more. Unfortunately, because we're at that point where that dollar of repair cost is getting, is rapidly approaching that four to five dollar.
Yeah, and everybody's in the same boat. I mean, that doesn't make any better, but everybody is in the same boat, yeah.
All the neighboring towns, I meet with a lot of the other highway superintendents. Glenn Schofield was at the garage today and we were talking and coming up with some different ideas. He wants to see our skid steer paver.
Right.
Because it's, you know, it's not a full pave, but it, it, it's better than hand reeking it and he wanted to take a look at that, so.
And we did talk about possibly asking Dutchess County for a shared services grant for that pothole patching machine. The engineer saw and the highway superintendent took a look at that. So possibly this year we could apply for that and see if we could share that with another town. But the problem with that is, we all need it at the same time. So we get something that we could share, you know, who gets it when?
Everybody's gonna need it at the same time.
You know, I mean, I know that we've been, some of us longer than others, Peter probably is one of the elderly's at this table. But, uh, I, I am confident that right now, the discussion that this town board has, you know, and has entertained, is very comforting for the community. Again, I mean, we, uh, we do not have a big playbook but we never had these kind of discussions before.
Scott and I.
So it, it is the beginning of a change. I mean, uh, but we, again, like the supervisor said, we have to really make some tough decisions, so.
We'll have to think about it and we have been.
The town engineer and I have talked and we purchased the, uh, the tack, tack wagon, which was a big help for us, especially on our, you know, our larger patches and our partial road paves. I, I think that helps a lot. And we did purchase the, uh, the smaller paver last year, which does help us a lot as well. We are able to do a lot of our, you know.
Major repairs and pavings?
Major, but not, you know, not full road paves with that machine. But we, we can do a lot. We do a lot more than, you know, what we, what most other towns are doing.
Do you have like a ballpark percentage how much we save, um, by doing it in-house compared to a contracted service?
Well.
What meaning what?
We can't do the tonnage like a contractor. An outside, an outside contractor is gonna be able to put down a lot more tonnage than we can in a day. We wouldn't be able to compete with that. But we can go in and do a lot of our, you know, sections, a hundred foot, a hundred fifty foot sections, two hundred foot sections.
So when we do these, these long, uh, full paving roads, are we gonna be doing those ourselves or are you?
No, that's a county bid.
Or we'll go off the county.
The town engineer explained it. Sorry if I interrupted that. You know, when we sub it out, the savings are that not only if, let's say, they're doing a job and it rains and the trucks are there. You know, if our trucks are there, you would have to find a way to use that material. Right now, if Scott supervises that job and it's raining, he'll say, you know what, you can't lay this asphalt down. The other thing is that, you know, we give us that price and they take in that price, you know, the manpower, the equipment. Bringing the material back and forth, insurance costs and also pension costs. So we could never really, and he has other things to do with his crew in the summer.
Yeah.
We've been having a lot of, a lot of drainage pipes. We've been getting a lot of cave-ins, rounded pipes through the winter.
There's a big savings in paving.
And for, to our benefit, we have an in-house engineer who, who, who is very detailed at this and, and that's to our benefit.
Absolutely.
And if we do come up with a plan where we do have more dollars for this, then possibly we discuss about going out for making our own bid where you could save a little bit more. So instead of piggybacking off of the county bid. But right now, what we have is what we're gonna be using the county bid for, so.
We're getting blacktop, our, our per ton prices through the county and a lot of the other smaller towns, Fishkill's doing the same, you know, so.
What is the price going for this year? Did you get a price yet?
The new bid is, I think we get it for fifty-seven per ton.
So it's a lot less than last year?
A little less than last year.
About ten dollars less, right?
No, not quite, not quite that. The last year we were at sixty-two.
Okay.
But that's at the plant?
That's at the plant. That's us purchasing for all of them.
At the plant.
Just a couple bucks for transportation.
Well, it's a little more than a couple dollars, yeah. It could be.
Peter, can you help?
I got no truck that big.
But we are working on it, all of us together. We're, I think we're, we're, we've got good ideas.
Yeah, we have good ideas. We'll come up with a comprehensive plan soon and, uh, I mean, at least for the future. This year we have a plan going forward and we'll have to do the best we can. Can anybody else have any comments, questions?
No, just gonna see realistically how far we can go.
That's it.
You're doing a great job with the money that you have right now.
Thank you very much. We try.
Yeah, thank you, highway superintendent. Thank you, town engineer.
It's very open, all of us. We all, everybody's bouncing ideas off of each other.
Ask the comptroller for more money. I mean, come on.
I don't know, I say talk with Mark all the time.
I can give you the chocolate, that's all I have.
Melt the chocolate down and use it on the road.
I didn't get a chocolate bar.
No, no, sorry, you don't get that. All right, thank you, Ken.
All right, yes, thanks.
Oh, well, you could stay for the next also is, uh, we're gonna be discussing the recreational maintenance facilities. So the engineer is busy doing presentations and he's going to do another one for us on, uh, maintenance facilities for our rec department.
Just, just briefly, just briefly. So as we all know, we had a maintenance shop in the, in the back of the town hall for, for the recreation department, uh, which was last year converted to, uh, offices, town offices for the comptroller's office.
Right.
And with that
Very nice though.
With that, you know, recreation lost, you know, a, a, a maintenance facility. Now, there is one at Lime Kiln. When we acquired Lime Kiln, there is a garage there. It, it's a little bit limited and it has a very low ceiling. It's a nice building, but it's got a low ceiling. And you can't put lifts in it, you, you know, you can't raise the equipment up to work underneath it. It also has really just, you know, one overhead door and it kind of makes, you know, jockeying equipment, you know, difficult. You gotta get everything out of the way to get whatever's up front. So, you know, they, they did use it this past winter. We do use it for storage, but it's just really not an ideal, you know, maintenance facility. So we're, we're looking at locating a replacement to the building in the back at Lime Kiln. Let me just bring that one up. There's just a little aerial view of Lime Kiln. Old Shenandoah Road here. And this is our existing building here. They also were able to make like, uh, like a little, you know, break area in here, a little office area in here. So this corner is like an office area where they have, you know, have their coffee break and whatnot. And then there's just one door over here. So, you know, anything that kind of goes in, you know, you have limited access trying to get it through that out, in and out that one door. This is where we're looking to, to locate a, a second building approximately thirty by sixty feet. It would have garage, four garage bays, you know, we, we would clear this area. It's a little less than an acre here. We would, we would clear this area out to potentially build a second building there. And it's gonna be something on the order of a building like this, something on the order. I think this has five bays. That building may actually have four bays with just, and a door. You know, for an area that's not accessible by traffic, but to keep tools and workbenches and, you know, things of that, mowers or whatever, things of that nature. We're gonna go with a sixteen-foot height so we can put two lifts inside so they can, you know, do their maintenance through the winter months and, uh, as needed. We have a budget, preliminary budget. Hopefully, everybody can kind of read that. If I blow it up anymore, you won't be able to see. But, so basically, to summarize, uh, the estimate here. And actually, I think I gave you the wrong one. Just bear with me. That's for something we're gonna talk about in a minute.
I think it just was two pages, if you scrolled up.
Oh, yeah? Okay, that could be.
Don't go crazy, Councilman Franco, when he says the budget.
That's the first one, okay.
Take it easy.
So this is for a thirty by sixty, sixteen-foot ceiling with four bays at Lime Kiln. So we have a total estimate of a hundred fifty-five thousand, seven thirty-two. That's, that's an estimate. In that is approximately twenty-two thousand dollars if we were to put a bathroom inside the building. And everyone knows a bathroom doesn't cost twenty-two thousand. Well, maybe some people's bathrooms cost that much, but but we have to bring water to it. We gotta put a, a septic field in, so that's where
So it's not just building a bathroom and building the septic fields, bringing the water line?
Right.
Yada, yada, yada.
All that. So that's, that's twenty-two thousand. Now, there is a bathroom at Lime Kiln itself, you know, but you have to, you know, walk into that facility, into the locker room, you know, and the workers sometimes have muddy, muddy boots and whatever. So it's, it's a consideration that I think the board has to, has to make. You know, it is possible that we could just do a rough out initially, get all the under slab plumbing done. And then, you know, a, a following year possibly, you know, do the rest of the work. But anyway, in that one fifty-five is approximately twenty-two thousand for, for a bathroom and sink. I further pulled out the labor and equipment, which is thirty-nine, approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars. Said if we were to do what I think potentially we could do in-house.
With the highway department?
With the highway department. You know, a kind of caveat to that being the building itself, you know, whether we can, if we just buy the kit, whether we can, you know, construct it. I, I, I think potentially we could. You gotta do a little more homework on that, but I think potentially we could. You know, we could get that one fifty-five down to about, you know, one sixteen out of pocket. Okay. So that's the facility at Lime Kiln, the potential facility at Lime Kiln. Now, the other issue is, is that a lot of, I'm gonna say probably a majority of our work is here at the Hamlet. We have two large facilities. We have the Hamlet Rec Facility, probably followed second by the Route Fifty-two Facility Soccer Complex.
Right.
Okay, which is not that far from Lime Kiln. And then you have Lime Kiln itself, obviously, and then we have, you know, up in Stormville on Lee Town and we have Redview and we have them scattered throughout the town. But here at the Hamlet, there's a lot that goes on, all the baseball games and the camps. There's a lot going here at the Hamlet. The building that we have in the back, as everyone knows, is in disrepair. There's no floor and just an old pole barn. We really need
Could fall down, actually.
We really need a space for more parking, okay? It's really an inconvenience when the trucks and the trailers are here loading up stuff and they're parked right in the back and
Court's in session.
You know, court's in session, because, you know, this is not the place. So we've already got one foot out the door by converting the shop to the comptroller's office. The next logical step in this is to, to get rid of that pole barn.
Absolutely.
Not put a nickel into it, just get rid of it, make parking there, which we need. And find another home for a similar-sized structure out in the, in the rec field area. That won't be used.
Similar size as to the one that's in the backyard?
Yeah, right now I'm calling it a twenty-four by twenty-five. If they go less than six hundred square feet.
Like a two-bay type of
Yeah.
Put it by the Davis house?
That would be, I think, best.
Somewhere in that vicinity, somewhere
Davis house has bathrooms. We would need a bathroom there and they could utilize those bathrooms.
We have, we, and we also have the, I mean, that's an option. We have at the pavilion, we have bathrooms.
Oh, we have that too.
You know, so we have to, I mean, there's, we don't have a specific spot yet in mind. But just the idea that we need to replace this with something a little more modern, uh, something airtight, uh, secure. Just electricity. We don't need bathrooms or anything, just electricity. I don't think we need heat or anything in, in this building. But, you know, the, the department, the, the maintenance department or rec department needs to be able to keep a couple mowers there, the line strippers there, all the things, the gator there. Everything that they're using on a regular basis is secure. If they do need to do a little repair, they can plug the compressor in, put air in the tire. They need to have something here because this is our, our major hub.
So you have a garage at the Davis house, right? What's in that garage right now?
I think the police, uh, gator.
Yeah. It's a one-bay garage.
That's not near That's not nearly what we would need.
Is that a two-car garage or one?
One-bay garage.
One-bay.
One-bay. What about if you blew that garage up and you made it two or three, or you added to it one way or the other?
It's an idea.
Or off the back of the house or something.
Or off the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they're thinking, maybe in that location.
So Scott, these buildings that you wanna put up, there, it seems to me, according to the material, that you wanna actually stick building?
No, these are gonna be steel structures.
Okay.
Steel.
I'm in kits.
No. Open, open span steel.
Yeah. So the same with the small building here, if we took, if we did the labor and material, I mean, equipment. We could do something in the neighborhood of twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, so if we go to that one, right, we have a total estimate of thirty-one-five, taking out the labor and equipment. Uh, out of pocket with material and subs, we have an estimate of about twenty-four thousand.
Okay, now, um, Tom, we could use a rec development fund for these buildings?
Absolutely.
Okay, 'cause there's some discrepancy, I believe, with some of the, uh, recreation advisory board members as to whether or not we could use recreation funds for rec maintenance facilities.
Well, you can use recreation monies, have to be used for recreation facilities, but part of a recreation facility is to provide for its maintenance care. So, um, there are many opinions that a state comptroller, uh, that would, for instance, uh, allow you to pay engineering fees out of the rec maintenance fund for engineering design of facilities, uh, in the parks. And so obviously, these are integral to the maintenance of recreation, recreation only. So it's purely, uh, you know, very elementary that it is rec development fund use.
What's the timeline are we looking at to do these, build these structures?
Well, not this year, right, Scott? And this is for next year?
Well, potentially, I mean, if the board decides to move forward, uh.
Maybe the small building this year?
I would think at least one, because.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, it'd be nice to get the foundation in, if we can get the foundation in the fall for the big building. And then, like we did, we did a lot of maintenance, obviously, during the winter months here, but if we can get the foundation in, that would be a good winter project.
Actually, the foundation for, uh, one of those buildings or just a slab?
Foundation.
You don't need a foundation?
For the larger one, we need a foundation. For the larger one, we need a foundation.
Cause you're gonna have lifts in there and.
Well, the lifts are gonna be on, on the, on the slab.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you also have structural steel.
Yes.
You know, it's a thirty-foot span, you know, it's a real building, so, yeah, you need foundation.
Is it steel? Is it aluminum better than steel?
Uh, no, we won't be using it. It'll be steel. The siding will be a galvanized metal, and the steel components are just, you know, English steel.
Didn't we, uh, do away with steel buildings at one time in the town code?
We did?
No, never in the code.
Never in the code?
It's in a design manual. There's a recommendation that metal buildings should be, um, you know.
Aesthetically.
Well, they should be made aesthetically pleasing, or it should be, a, a property owner should be asked to consider other. But it's not in the law. It's not required. That was a myth that everybody followed as reality.
I remember discussing something like that. I want to.
Correct.
I, I can tell you, that got carried away with the sewer plant across the street, that they didn't want air, they didn't want the metal building, and it's just a maintenance headache over there. Same thing with the Four Corners plant. It's wood. Over there, it's, believe it or not, it's the woodpeckers going crazy with that building.
Oh, God.
You, you can't beat a metal building for, you know, no maintenance.
Yeah, well, we have to think about cost.
And a metal roof for that matter, you know.
Are we putting copper roof on both?
Thirty-year warranty, forty-year warranty.
Are we gonna put a copper roof on both the buildings?
I don't think so.
You wanna sell the town all, you could do that. But anyway, uh, I think you could even do these buildings this year. It doesn't take a lot of.
Well, if, if we're gonna do it.
Even better.
But if we're gonna do it ourselves, we need the manpower, and this is when everyone's working right now, so.
Yeah, we, we gotta pray for a mild winter.
Yeah, no, that's a.
But I mean, I, again, if we can get the foundation in up there in the fall, then we could, you know, maybe do the erection during the winter.
Have to finish with the paving.
After the paving season.
No snow, no ice.
After baseball, soccer, and everything else that goes on.
I forgot that they're busy now.
Okay.
Um, the other thing that we do need up at, up by, behind the Davis house is more electric in certain areas. Like Community Day and stuff like that. We need like a chute.
The rec director was talking about expanding that, yeah.
Expanding that out there.
Mm-hmm. Mark, what do.
He's got lots of money.
What do we have, uh, roughly right now in the rec development account?
About seven hundred thousand, I think, around there.
I don't think there's been any additions this year, so.
Okay, so we have seven hundred thousand in that account, and we have a couple big projects that are on tap, pay some.
If they happen.
Large fees. Well, they're moving forward, so that's good news.
Mm-hmm.
So it's up to the board if, you know, we wanna utilize funds from the rec development to move forward with these projects, but, uh.
I mean, worst-case scenario, you're talking about two fifty?
Which needs a place?
He does need a place.
For what?
What was the two buildings?
Do all the maintenance in-house.
What was the first one? Did it wind up at roughly?
One seventeen.
One fifty.
Where did all the materials and?
Well, one seventeen, say one twenty.
Say worst case.
And then another twenty-five.
It depends whether we do it in and out. I mean, worst cases, we don't do anything ourselves. We sub it all out, right?
That's one ninety, if we, if we sub it all out.
Worst case, one fifty for both.
One fifty and then.
One forty-five.
Forty for the other one?
One, no, one seventeen for one and twenty-four for the other.
When we do the labor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one forty-ish versus one eighty-ish, something like that, one eighty-five, yeah.
So to say forty thousand, if we could delay to, or amend to do it, I think is worth it, obviously, you know.
I mean, you guys.
It's not like we don't have nothing, you know.
You can see, you can see what we can do when we have, when we're not out, you know.
Absolutely. They're doing tremendous work in this town hall.
These guys are, are really good.
Tremendous work.
You know, I mean, we just, we did the clubhouse and the announcer's booth over at the, you know, not completely rebuilt it, but some of the boards were falling off and rotting and.
Yeah, we constructed it, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we'd pay to, maybe do a small one first, only that it's a kind of a lower hanging fruit.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be a lot easier to get completed sooner. And even if we don't get to the second one, at least we still have it by fall, that we can still utilize it.
That would be, that would be something, you know.
And clears up the back, opens the back.
And it clears up the back at the same time, so maybe, maybe we should do the smaller one first. And if we can get to the next one, we get to the next one, but at least get, you know, I'm certain we can get the small one done.
Right.
And that gives us more storage to, you know, for winter.
For winter.
Park things in there, the mowers and.
Right.
So as far as the repairs, uh, those machines, they get repaired at Limekiln or they done at the highway?
We, we repair, or we can at Limekiln, and if they can't get it in there and it has to go up on a lift, then we bring it over to highway. We try and do all the repairs in-house.
Good.
As much as possible.
How you doing with machines? Uh, do you need anything new or you?
We are good for this year. We can't afford to really do much more. We're, we're gonna go to the state auction with what we have left and see if we can get a couple more home runs like we had last year.
Yeah, don't be spending too much on here.
I'm bringing Nick with me this time.
Yeah, I'm coming, that's right.
He's coming with me.
Can I drive one of the trucks home?
Oh, there you go.
I wanna do that.
A new Dodge.
Thank you, Highway Superintendent. So does the board wanna go forward, at least with the small building?
Yes.
And then we could discuss in future meetings about, uh.
I mean, if it's something that they need, it probably, you know, the discussion should be when to do one and the other, I mean.
So I think we should start with the small one and then possibly more down, uh, the, the summer and fall, before the fall, we could discuss about the foundation for the second one. That sounds good?
Yes.
Do, do we have to take any action now, Tom?
Yes, I, well, we'll have the.
The resolution?
The resolution to, for rec development funds.
We just had to make the appropriation.
Okay.
Well, there's, there's that, and we all have to decide on the exact location for the small one.
So why don't, um, the engineer and the highway superintendent discuss that and give a proposal? I'll give the proposal to the town board.
Sounds good.
All right.
But you're not opposed to attaching it or putting it in close proximity to the Davis house?
I, I would think that'd make it easier, because if you want electric in it, you can run it right out.
Yeah. And all. And also they'll access it, the, the drive through the park, because they don't like to go to the community center to exit with the trailer.
It's a hard drive.
So then they could access.
So we'll look at that.
The Davis house through, uh, Church Street or through the park, so it's, it's probably buzzed.
So we'll, we'll try to focus on that.
And there's the bathroom there.
Okay.
And you also have the bathrooms in the park as well, too, so.
Right.
Now, the other, over at Limekiln, is there, there's no water in that other garage?
No.
No.
Now, where is the septic?
We have to put a septic in.
Where's the septic for the main building, though?
In the front.
So you can't tie those two se- you couldn't tie a bathroom to that septic?
Well, there's rock up there, and I think by the time we try to get through the rock and get through that length, it'd be just as easy to put a new system.
So it's on the wrong end of the property.
That shooting elevation sites, which we haven't yet, it's close, I would think, Scott, right?
Well, and it's the rock. I mean, you know, I'm not saying it's not doable, but I think by the time you fight through the rock and everything, it might just be simpler to put some little system right there.
I don't think they need, I don't think they need a big system over there.
Right.
How many people usually, less than ten, right?
Yes.
And they use bathrooms all over, so.
No, I'm, this is just for these guys to go to the bathroom.
I understand.
Right.
Yeah.
But they, there's, most of the time they're out working, so, you know, they could be using bathrooms all over.
Well, the mechanics, the mechanics would like to have at least a place where they can wash up, and same with the guys at the end of the lab.
So we, we gotta wash at least.
I mean, have coffee or lunch, you gotta wash up, you know, so.
Rather than going into Limekiln gym, you know, it would be so much easier to have.
There's probably an OSHA requirement for that, too?
We have to look at that. On the passion OSHA, you gotta provide.
No, I was just thinking if the septic was.
Particularly when you have.
I know, I know, we looked at it, we looked at it.
I did.
I think it might be just easy just to.
High washes, things like that.
I have an eye wash station there.
On the other side of the building by the playgrounds.
Across the parking lot, you gotta cut the parking lot, you gotta get through the rock.
With all of that, you know. Run a foul verro, if you don't have one, yeah.
Yeah, one of those things that you put the.
Straight pipe.
We have the eye wash for them, and that's, you know.
Well, we'll have to, you have that at, uh.
At Limekiln and at the highway, you know, and the medical cabinets and.
Right.
Excellent.
They're checked quarterly and they're serviced.
Okay, so I'll come up with a draft with the engineer and the highway superintendent, propose it to the board. Peter could put, install the eye wash system.
I got one.
And it'll be good.
Yeah, I got one of those for you.
All right. All right, anybody else? Comments, questions, concerns? All right, thank you, Ken.
You guys, it was a pleasure.
Yeah, and now, uh, open discussion. Any board members wish to discuss anything?
So Stormville Fire Company's having their pancake breakfast this Sunday at eight AM. This is at the fire company on Route fifty-two.
Time to Easter egg hunt. Time to Easter egg hunt, chief?
Easter egg hunt is eleven AM, yeah, community center.
Eleven AM.
Saturday.
So I got a couple of things just to mention, uh, March thirtieth, when we did the town cleanup. Usually I do the road from Frankie Super at three seventy-six up to where Stewart is, and I found, I even told the highway superintendent that this year.
Something good?
This year the roads were a lot cleaner than I found it in the past year.
That's good.
So somebody's doing a good job, not throwing garbage of the cars. Uh, I, not as many beer bottles, so I guess Peter doesn't go down that route. So, but usually, it's been pretty good.
I thought you found something valuable. I thought maybe you found something valuable.
They're a gallon wine jokes.
It never happens. But anyway, I wanna thank the community for that. Uh, then, uh, the town supervisor and I, we attended on April fourth, the supervisor meeting with, uh, the police department. Uh, again, uh, those meetings are always, uh, very informative. We usually get updates what the police department is planning on doing and, uh, sharing ideas with, uh, with the town supervisor and I. Always great things happening over there. And, uh, I believe it was yesterday that we attended, you know, the, we were invited to attend a pancake breakfast with the seniors offered by East Fishkill PBA. I mean, I, I had to congratulate, uh, personally, I had to congratulate, um, John Wood, Lieutenant John Wood. He did a great job. I mean, they, you know, he had a personable, uh, interchange with, with the, with the seniors. These people, you know, the seniors, I, I strongly believe they deserve all we could do for them. I, I personally, uh, have a lot of respect for them. I, I was raised by my grandparents. So to me, uh, whatever we could do for them, and the smiles that they had. Also, great informations that, uh, questions that were asked and, uh, exchange, giving back the information by the lieutenant. Especially one thing that stuck back in my head was the fact that lately some scammers have been using our local police department's phone number to, to get some money off, uh, uh, seniors. Um, you know, there was a lot of strong points of, uh, information given to them, and they were happy to receive it. They felt, I mean, I looked at their faces, they were smiling, they felt like somebody was looking over them, so I'm really happy. And I would thank the police department for doing a great job for that. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Councilman, anything?
Uh, the season's started with, um, with recreation, so glad to see all the kids out there. Thanks again for everybody with, um, town cleanup deputy supervisor. Thank you very much for organizing that again. It was great. And belated, happy birthday.
Thanks.
I was gonna say that.
On part of the town cleanup day, the only peo- three major people we thank that should be thanked that, uh, Royal Carding, they donate the thirty-yard dumpster. You're right, there was a lot less garbage.
They let us keep it an extra day, too.
Don't, don't let Ken know, man.
No, I did, that's.
We, we requested it.
Yeah.
Uh, Hopo Hop bagels for donating the bagels, and East Fishkill Provision for donating lunch for those that showed up. And the police department brought the largest group. We probably had fifty, sixty people there, maybe. And I would say the majority of them, good half of them were cops.
Was, uh, this year, uh, the attendance of the volunteers usually what you get?